Right, James?
We on James? Yep, good to go.
Okay, I will call the meeting of the Ohi City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston?
Here.
Mayor Protem Blatz?
Here.
Councilmember Francina?
Here.
Councilmember Haney?
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Any changes in the agenda?
Nope.
If not, we will consider the agenda approved as submitted by the city manager.
Mayor.
It'll be held at 7:30. So we'll go to consent calendar. You want to pull it?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second to approve the consent calendar.
Hi.
Then it's ordered. Okay, nicely. Oh, I jumped right past the pledge, didn't I? Okay, well, yeah, let's do the pledge of allegiance. We'll all rise. And Bill, will you lead us?
Oh, my goodness, all right. Okay, I've risen. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. The Republic, the which is and one nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, we will go to. I'm glad that Randy is enjoying council for the first time since I.
Well, you gave us that little heads up about what your wife was seeing and you stood up.
Okay.
All right, something happened.
I'm glad I could bring a smile to your face. Let's go to the discussion item number two. Mr. City Manager, you have an update on the virus situation, the pandemic?
Yes, thank you. Let me take one second here to pull something up.
Oh, I lost my, my picture.
Well, that's me. What you should be seeing is a, is a presentation, so we're trying something new.
No, I see Zoom, I don't see anything else.
Oh.
I see it just as you.
Try turning your camera on again, there's a little icon. I do that sometimes. At the bottom.
What, what should be showing on the screen right now is a, it should say coronavirus impact slash or dash cash flow.
Right.
So I'll give you a second.
Bill, where's the camera, right there?
There's some kind of a, I forget, James, isn't there an icon down at the bottom?
Yeah. Let me go back.
I think if you turn it off, sometimes there's an icon at the bottom, you can push that and it.
Randy's back.
Yeah, I see Randy.
He can't see anything, though.
Oh, he can't see anything.
I think he may have muted the app.
So how do I, how do I change that?
Look down on your, your taskbar on the bottom and you should see a, a window for Zoom and click on that.
A window for Zoom.
Or an icon.
On the left-hand side at the bottom, there's a microphone that says mute and another one that says stop video, so.
Yeah, I have Windows, I have the mute, I have Wi-Fi. Full charge, oh, is this it here?
Okay, so you're seeing it until we share the screen. Let's see. I'm gonna hit share.
There you go.
You still see it, Randy?
Yeah, we're good.
Cool.
I don't know, it's dangerous to let Dara take a walk, Randy.
Okay, you don't tell me.
Let's thank everyone at home for putting up with that.
You thought our way to Johnny's house.
Thanks, everybody, for your patience.
This is a tutorial on Zoom rather than council meeting, that's what it means.
Yeah, so we, we recently, on Friday, we had a budget committee meeting, so we wanted to start by talking just quickly about what high-level, what we talked about at that meeting, I think it was useful, and the budget committee, I think, appreciated the information, so we wanted to make sure to provide it to council as well. So we'll talk about this, which is more budget-focused, but then we'll also talk about some of the actions that the city is working on. So we'll start with just a high-level overview. And, and so I just want to start, we've talked about this a little bit, but obviously, right now, many businesses are closed, hotels are closed, restaurants are limiting their operations. Everybody in the city is impacted, which includes the city of Ohi. We expect revenues for the city to be reduced $1.2 million through May 31st. And as we start moving through this, you know, the question is going to be how long that continues or if, if, if things begin to reopen. So we're looking at, right now, you know, conservative estimate of $1.2 million reduction in our revenues. If June were to remain closed, if things were to remain closed through June, which we don't know yet, but it would be another $500,000 impact on the city. And so the other point just to make is that we all know that TOT is a big revenue source for us, but the other thing we're seeing right now is that sales tax revenues are going to be reduced. And many agencies are, are many, the, the state has talked about deferring a collection of even the revenues that, that we would typically receive. So we're expecting to be impacted. We're always looking for ways to, to communicate with the state and the federal government about the needs of small cities. I think everybody's heard by now that the funding that the federal, that the CARES Act provides has been identified for cities larger than 500,000 people, which we are obviously not, but also no city in Ventura County is that size. So Ventura County cities thus far have not received any support. So about 20 minutes before this meeting, we, we were talking to the League of Cities and we are planning to put in a letter of support to the state requesting funding from, from some of that funding, but at this time, we don't have any guarantee of receiving any of that. We also noted that property tax may be impacted because we're expecting some people, there's going to be a lot of deferral requests and perhaps non-payments. And so the other point we want to make is that if hotels and stores return in June, which would be a good scenario, we'd still need to plan to not receive any revenues until August because it would take time. They'd have to, they'd have to collect taxes in June, and then they'd have July to remit them to the city, so we'd likely get them in August. So there's definitely a time period we need to make sure that we are able to continue to provide services for without revenues coming in. One thing we did at the budget committee was we talked about, we always talk about our annual budget being $10 million. But we realized for a short-term problem like this, hopefully it's a short-term problem, that it really is not useful to talk about our $10 million budget, it's more useful to talk about month-to-month costs and revenues. So we went through our budget, we put together this average monthly expense sheet. It gives you a feel for what the city typically spends and what it's spending that, those funds on. The, the average monthly expenses are about $830,000 per month. $340,000 goes to employee costs and $275,000 go to sheriff services. So those two items alone account for over $600,000 of the $800,000 we spend every, every month. So it becomes very clear very quickly if we're going to make cuts, if we end up needing to make cuts or reductions. There's not a lot of extra that, that we can cut. It gets pretty, pretty, you know, pretty close, pretty quick. So, you know, we laid out some of the other things, we spent about $18,000 a month on average on recreation programs, $50,000 on miscellaneous operating expenses, $80,000 on our contract building and, uh, building services and a little bit on planning and public works there, $46,000 on utilities and repairs and $8,000 on retiree medical and $13,000 per month on community organization funding. So that makes up our expenses. We came to council a couple, our last meeting, and we talked about $150,000 in cuts. And so again, we wanted to show that monthly because monthly, that's $150,000 annually, so what really that comes down to is about $50,000 a month that we cut. Which, again, if you go back to our total expenses being $830,000, that's a decent reduction, but it still means we're spending $775,000 a month.
James, real quick, just if you don't mind, but we're showing $81,000 in contract services, yet we're only showing a $15,000 reduction. Would that be an area that you would look more closely at?
So one of the challenges with our contract services are, are building fees are the bulk, bulk of them. In building, we have a fee arrangement where every dollar that they bring in, we split. So if we, it's a, it's a challenge because if you reduce those services, that also means we're bringing in less revenue, if that makes sense. So if they're, they're, they're only getting paid if they bring revenue in, I guess is the, kind of the, the way to explain it. So, so, you know, we've looked at reducing things like our contract planning because that's just an extra cost. With building, if they're bringing money in, they, they get a percentage of it. So that, you know, in some, some ways, we don't want them to reduce too much because that means we're bringing less in, so. And that's, those are the fees charged on, you know, building permits and things, which, the one point I would make from that is that we are still offering all services at the city. Besides the recreation programs, which can't be operated currently, but we're, we're still offering all services at our city. We're still offering building and planning, building and safety, public works, services, which is something we're, we're proud of, a lot of cities have gone to minimal services. So potential savings, we, we brought the savings last month, those savings, the $23,000 per month for the hiring freeze, the $15,000 per month for kind of a miscellaneous category there, and then a $20,000 per month saving for part-time employees. So we've made some, some reductions, I think it comes out to about 8%. There's other possibilities, we talked about these at the budget committee and, and started talking about them at a high level, but we aren't, we aren't recommending any drastic cuts at this point. The, you know, the challenge is, we're anticipating this is a short-term issue, and so making long-term cuts to resolve a short-term issue would not be the optimal situation. We're, we are hoping, you know, with these cuts and with the, the reserves that we do have, that we can weather the storm, but it's going to be tight. And to, to that point, we have about $5.3 million available. And we've always said, we've talked about this a lot recently, we have $3.4 million in reserves, so that is still true. We have $1.9 million in our various, you know, checking accounts essentially. So we have about $5.3 million, when you start doing the math, if we're spending $775,000 or so, we have about five to six months' cash flow. But to remind everybody, this emergency began in mid-March, so, you know, six months from mid-March puts us in mid-September. So if everything resolves as we expect, you know, we'd weather the storm, but we need to, we need to stay diligent and continue to monitor it. We're not complacent with this, for sure. And, and then as mentioned before, and I noted here, that we're continuing to advocate for emergency funding. A lot of cities are running into issues where they have one or two months of cash flow and they are going to be advocating aggressively. So I think if we can all work together on that, we'd be likely to get some funding for small cities.
Mayor, may I ask James a question on that point?
Sure, Bill, go.
James, you know, the county, it's not, it's not cities, it's jurisdiction under the CARES Act of 500,000 and more, I believe. And of course, the county is the only, what, over 500,000, all the cities are under 500. There's a lot of counties like that. My understanding is Ventura County's made it very clear, it's not gonna act as a fiscal agent to distribute some of that relief that the county is getting to the cities. Is that true of every county in a similar situation? Do we have any information on that?
That's a good question. I, we, I, I will say, we, we asked in our city, our accounting leaders meeting with the other city managers in the county, we asked the county if they planned to distribute, and the answer was to distribute to the smaller cities, which, again, to, to be clear, all of the cities in Ventura County are considered small. And the answer was no, that it's not going to be distributed to those cities at, you know, at this time, under this round of funding.
Right. I have. We don't know if that's universal and are common in, in other counties in the same situation.
I haven't, I haven't looked into other counties to see what they've done.
You've got enough to do, I was just wondering if you heard anything, thank you.
It's worth looking up, we'll look into it.
Like Santa Barbara's in a similar situation.
Yep.
I think every city in Santa Barbara County is below 500,000.
Yeah, I think so.
And so it's only the county that would have the, meet the 500, maybe just one call to Santa Barbara and see what they're doing, see if it's the same.
We can do that, yeah, we'll check in with them.
Yeah.
Mayor? Nancy Pelosi said over the weekend that there's supposed to be another round of funding appeared for cities that the federal government is looking at passing again. They purposely, and word was, they purposely didn't touch cities in the last round because they're expecting another round, so we'll see. But that's supposed to be, I think, where that circumvention of that county issue is supposed to be taken care of in another round of funding.
Yeah, we've heard that, too. So we're gonna, we're starting early, getting letters in and things like that, just to get the, the funding.
Mayor, can we go back a page? And I just wanted to have James expand a little bit on this, other savings, and we have negotiating something with the sheriff's contract, I don't know what that would look like. Community organizations, so you're looking at what, the museum, are we looking at, at all Green Coalition, things of that nature? Chamber of Commerce? And then what do you, when you talk about 10% reduction of each department, how would you, is that just furloughs? What do you do, what are you looking at there?
Yes, there's several different options. We, we would look at, other cities have gone to furloughs. Some have limited office hours, things like that. At our, at this point, we're starting to think about those things and putting a plan together if we need to. But with the current discussion about the timeline for reopening, we don't think that we'll need to go in, you know, we'll need to, to do any of, of those ones. But it's just, everything with this changes so quickly that if, if there is a change immediately, we, we'd have a plan in place to, you know, depending on how much we need to save.
Randy, at the Budget and Finance Committee, we asked the finance officer and James to, as the beginning of our budget deliberations, to enumerate all the mandatory services that we provide, the things that we have to provide or that, in some cases, the funding is restricted, so that can only be used for certain activities. And then there are things of discretionary, and there are kind of two kinds of discretionary. There's level of service on the mandatory side, but then there are.
Oh. Johnny, you, you muted.
Muted.
Mayor Johnston, you muted, I'm sorry. Can you unmute him? Oh, I think we lost Mayor Johnston.
I'll send him a note.
Okay, I'm back.
There you go.
Okay, who, who turned my mic off?
Somebody hacked it.
Nothing. Okay, where was I in my little diatribe there? I was saying that the finance committee has staff. Yeah, am I still on the air?
Yes.
Okay, we asked the staff if they would start working on lists that distinguish between the activities that we have to provide, and then we'll, we can analyze those as to the level of service that we provide under the mandatory side. And then we have the discretionary side, which is the stuff that we choose to do, that we may or may not be able to fund. And then when we get into the budget process next month, we'll be able to kind of hone this down, and then eventually it gets down to contracts and payroll.
Well, I, I guess what I was looking at, and thank you for that explanation, Mayor. I was also looking at, when we talk about 10% reductions, we had just this year, this fiscal year moved everyone back up to 40 hours. So I was looking at, if we did a 10% reduction on those 40-hour employees, now we're back to 36. And if we wanted to achieve a 20%, then we'd be down to 30. So we're not laying employees off, what we're doing is reducing hours of, of employees working. So it's, I was just wondering if that, how you were looking at that, James?
Yeah, that's something we've analyzed and considered. Right now, like, like I, and I'm repeating, but the, with the timeline that we've all been kind of hearing, you know, from the recent state updates and, and the county taking some steps towards reopening, as they, as they called it last week, where, you know, we had prepared for the worst-case scenario, but it's sounding like it's not the worst-case scenario, but we'll, we'll keep watching it and adjust as needed. We do have the, the, our first budget workshop is scheduled for May 12th. And one of the funky things that happened with this is that we're in, you know, it's April 28th today, I believe, and, and we're about at the end of our fiscal year. So in some ways, it's bad because there's not a lot of savings we can, we can meet in one month this year, but on the other hand, it, it's good timing as far as allowing us to consider all these things in our budget discussions, which will begin at our next council meeting. But the last slide in, that we talked about is that we are, we have started, we've contacted our bank to investigate a potential line of a credit, a line of credit for emergency usage if this continues longer than expected. And so we've started to look into that, it's purely for cash flow. So we will continue to, to look into that and determine if that's an option. We talked about it at the budget committee, and the treasurer and finance director agreed to review our investments, which are these, the $3.4 million here listed as CDs. We believe that our interests that we receive off of those investments are lower than what we would pay for a loan. So we, you know, we would anticipate that the, the line of credit would be, you know, a worst-case scenario not to be used unless this really continues long. But we wanted to, you know, to let everybody know that that, that's something we're looking into. And so essentially, after all this, the message we're trying to get across is that the key question, the key issue right now facing us is cash flow issues. It's facing every city, there's, every city, no matter, you know, in the county, no matter how well-off it is, is having these same kinds of issues and discussions. We're gonna keep watching closely, monitoring and adjusting as needed. We've already, you know, one point I'll make is these reductions here that we've already implemented, I think, come out to about 8%. So we've already made some, some significant reductions, and we're, we're looking at other options, so. So we, we went over that with the, with the budget committee as well, and we wanted to, to give a high-level overview of that here. If there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to take them. The second part will be focused on some of the actions that we're taking in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, do we have any other questions for James on this before he gets into the specific actions being taken during the pandemic?
My, my comment, Mayor, would be, thank you, James, for your thoughtfulness and, and thanks the finance committee for looking at this and, and working with James and the director. I, I really appreciate the information, and I'm sure the community, if they're watching, enjoys it, too. And it's much needed, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. So with that, we had a whole timeline from March 13th to now, but I know it's in the report and people are probably tired of hearing it, so I'll just skip to, to the items that are upcoming. We're continuing several actions. One thing we wanted to mention, because it's a resource that became available last week that I think would be really useful to people, certain people within the valley, is in, we've been communicating with the, the county chamber of businesses about some of the programs available. They just announced that the county area agency on aging is offering a full-service food and supply pantry at no cost for residents that are 60 or older and people with disabilities. They'll provide a two-week food supply by delivery, and information is available at 805-477-7300. So we just wanted to get that out. One of the questions we get a lot is how seniors are, are gonna be able to get foods, food under these circumstances, so that, I think, is a critical need. Moving past, oh, I'm sorry.
Would you repeat the phone number for those listening at home?
Yes, it's 805-477-7300. It's open to Ventura County residents 60 or older. But moving past that, some of the things we've been working on, one thing we've been working on currently is the county's order from April 20th encouraged certain exercise activities such as golfing, tennis, pickleball, walking, hiking, running, bicycling, pleasure driving, and working around places of residence such as gardening. Now, the reason why we're bringing this up is, in the order, they had laid out specific requirements for golfing to be reopened, which was helpful, and Sewell Park reopened immediately because those requirements were in place. They did not lay out requirements for tennis and pickleball, and it's more complicated than it sounds because of questions like, are, are we going to allow doubles play? You know, how many people do we allow on a court at one time? How do you maintain six feet of, of social distancing? So what we've done to address that, we've done a few things, is we, we plan to reopen on May 2nd, which is Saturday. And when we reopen on May 2nd, we are going to have hand sanitizing stations in place for each court, or at, one at Upper Libby, one at Lower Libby, and then one at the pickleball courts. And we are going to have signage, and I have a, an example here in front of me. I don't know if it'll show, but we're gonna have signage posted that has rules and guidelines. And one, one rule we wanted to note that, that, you know, maybe not everybody will be happy with, is we are planning to allow single play only to start. With doubles, and, and we, we looked into it, we looked up the U.S. Tennis Association guidelines and the pickleball associations, association, associations guidelines, and they each noted that double, doubles play is not encouraged at the moment. So we're gonna follow that and go with single play only, and there's several other requirements, but that's the, I think, the key one. So we're gonna reopen the courts on May 2nd. As I mentioned, Sewell Park has reopened. We are opening, we are planning to open the parking lot at Sarzati Park, but the barbecue pits, shade structures and playgrounds will remain closed. The skate parks and the children's playgrounds at both Sarzati, Sarzati and Libby Park will remain closed. And the reason with those is the shared equipment and the groups, you know, encouraging people into small groups. So we, we have put some time into trying to make sure that social distancing can be followed in those cases. We, oh, yes.
I have a question, too.
James, are we gonna, are the signs gonna cover how people should queue to wait to play? And also, are we gonna have some guidelines so that people don't, you know, hog the courts if there's a lot of excess demand for these, for the playing the courts? So people, you know, just are nice about it and take turns, don't hog the courts.
We, we do have guidelines in asking people to leave the court as soon as they're done playing and to not congregate, so we'll, we'll keep that in.
How about long, how about how long they play?
We didn't have a time limit, so we can, we can, that's something we can add to it. So we are planning to, we've developed these signs and we're gonna, you know, print them, laminate them and post them in the next day or two, so we'll.
Just trying to avoid conflicts.
Yeah.
Mayor, may I say something, please? James?
Yes.
Just a couple of comments. When I was in Libby Park, I think it was, it was Friday night, Friday night, Saturday night, it was Saturday night. All I saw were out-of-towners, they were not social, just, you know, there was no, they were just in little groups and homeless people. Maybe one or, maybe, I, I actually didn't see anybody I recognized, but there could have been some locals. I mean, the unfortunate thing about all this is the closure of the playground is impacting all the children that live in apartments that don't have a yard, and they're hooped up. And I, I would, you know, if there was some way to keep out-of-town people out of Ohi, that would do more good and open the playground. I mean, we're in a dilemma. The dilemma is out-of-town visitors, and then we could, I feel like we could be more lenient with our own people and the children if it wasn't for the out-of-town visitors. I just wanted to say that. I don't know what to do about it, but I, I find it very sad that the kids can't go in the playground.
Thank you.
And I have one more comment, if I may, unless, unless James wants to respond.
The, the one response I'll say to that is, is we've kind of had to look for ways to try to, you know, leave amenities available for residents and, and do it creatively. So that, that ties in with, you know, the North Signal Street closure, which we still do get a lot of questions about, but, and we're planning to continue it. But the idea there is encourage people to walk to, to Shell and discourage traffic coming from hours away to, to use Shell. So we're trying to get. So we're trying to get creative, but yeah, we don't have all the, all the solutions on that.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a dilemma. It really is to see, we're trying so hard to do the right thing. And then we see groups out of towners who seem, you know, maybe not all, but the ones I saw seemed pretty, what's the word, nonchalant. Yeah. So, and the other thing I want to say about the pickleball, I just find it unfortunate that, that we're resuming that with all the, the impact on the neighbors. When we haven't tested, I thought we were going to test some kind of noise mitigation equipment and let us consider that these people are also urged to stay home. And it's going to be, it's going to, the noise is going to impact them even more and add to their stress. And I wish that the pickleball people, you know, out of some, out of consideration, uh, from my perspective, I wish that we could postpone that until this pandemic is over.
So that's. We do have the right, James, don't we, to be more restrictive than the county if we choose to?
Yes. And that's, that's one of the intents of this item is, you know, we're, we're looking at the county order and trying to think of the best ways to implement these in Ojai. But, uh, I, I am looking for council feedback if there are concerns of, of, uh, opening certain services too soon.
Well, I, I, that's why I'm expressing my concern that during this stressful time, we're going to add to the stress of the neighbors uh, by opening up the pickleball court. Uh, that is my, uh, my, my opinion. And then a, a related question is, uh, is, did, uh, the noise mitigation equipment arrive or what's happening with that?
Yeah. So we did test equipment on Friday. It was a small reduction, uh, maybe a, a decibel or two, depending on where you stood. So we don't, um, we don't think that the equipment that we tried is the solution.
Yeah.
Which, you know, I will say, um, that we haven't determined that there is a, an actual noise violation, but we are trying to be responsive to lower the noise and, um, and the, the reduction was not substantial with this equipment.
Could I, um, add to that, Mayor?
Yeah, certainly, Bill.
Okay. Well, first of all, James and I have talked about this and there's some iterations of how we could test that fence, you know, in a different way than it was used. For example, I believe it was used on the ground instead of a little off the ground. And we haven't really tested it being slightly off the ground, which might make a big difference. Um, so I, I, I think we're gonna, James, are we gonna have it up? When, if we open up the pickleball courts, we're gonna have it up?
If we open up the courts, we can, uh, we can arrange a test. Yeah.
We can have it up. And I, and I would just say, I, I, I do not agree on, on this matter with Susan because it's so important for people to have physical activity and that helps their immune systems. And this is a large group of people that I think we're serving in that respect. So I think, I think we should treat them the same as we treat tennis.
Well, I disagree. I respectfully disagree. I think that the people that live there, uh, deserve more consideration. And there's plenty of other ways people can exercise. So that's okay.
Okay. The other, uh, Randy?
Oh, Mayor, I had, uh, I'm not going to touch the pickleball issue because I, there's just no reason to go there. The, um, what I am looking at though is, you know, we have a recreation staff that isn't operating, um, odd at Sarazotti programming or, or managing or monitoring programming. And I was thinking, what would it take to take a recreation employee and take them over to the skate park? And maybe open up, um, have them, you know, take a bean counter or do something, but maybe we limit 10 kids per hour, 10 kids per something. But, um, I agree with Susan, the fact that we do have a lot of children that really, you know, they're not in school and they, and they, they would like to recreate just as much as the adults in our community. And I think, um, maybe Renee could come up with a plan that we could open up the skate park for certain hours during the day to accommodate some activity. And again, treat it the same way as we would pickleball or tennis and restrict the amount of kids in, interacting in there. But, you know, we, we, we gotta give these, these children something to do. So, and I think we have staffing to, to accommodate that.
Well, on the pickleball thing, James, uh, I don't know what hours you've got it, uh, set up for, but the idea of restricting it to singles playing only and maybe limit the hours from 10 to two or something. So people who are sitting on their, what was it? One of the, uh, neighbors said that they like, you know, have their coffee and read their paper, you know, and that thing is annoying, but mostly you have your paper and your coffee before, say, 10 o'clock. And, uh, and if, if the hours were somewhat limited, uh, the part of this thing was sold for people like, uh, Randy and me, uh, the, the elder set. But, uh, and we're not supposed to be out there anyway. So, uh.
I, I agree with the mayor. I could see something like two hours in the morning, nine to 11. And then, you know, the problem is, is we head into summer, no one's going to play at midday. So you're going to have a little more, um, evening activity. So maybe you do two hours in the evening, six to eight, and you do, you know, nine to 11 in the morning and see how that works. And you could also, you could also limit your court activity. Instead of having four, you only have two. I mean, you know, you could open the lower tennis courts and keep the upper courts closed or vice versa. There's ways of, of, of working with individuals that might be impacted as well as accommodating the adults in our community that enjoy that sport. So.
And I also agree with exploring a limited trial opening of the skate park too. I think it's a good idea.
I support that as well.
The only challenge we have with the skate park is we didn't, um, there wasn't an exemption for that, that we could find in the public health order, but we can, uh, we have our, our call, our regular call. So we can follow up and see if, if there's a, a public health concern behind that or not. So.
And with, with controls.
Right.
Yeah. And, and is there a limit on the amount of, um, you know, is it five or did we up it to 10, the amount of people in a confined space right now? So that's what I'm trying to say is you could start with five and, and work your way up with that and, and just accommodate how long they could stay in there. Things of that nature. I, I think it's doable.
The, the allowance for 10 people, I'm glad you brought that up because we, we actually wanted to say that. We wanted to make sure to state that. The allowance for 10 people that was assessed on the 18th ended up not occurring. So there is, there, at this point, the county has not said that there's, you know, that groups of a certain size are okay. They've just identified specific, uh, activities that are okay.
Okay.
But, uh, but yes.
When it comes to the skate park right now, with things being as quiet as they are, I know down in my neck of the woods, I see skateboarders come over and they, you know, go in the parking lot, maybe one or two, uh, and they're, you know, they're not around each other, but you put them all in a small area like that where control is more difficult. Uh, I think that we, if, we wait until we find out what, what's the next step's going to be before we open everything up.
Well, I agree with you, Johnny. I, I'm just, I'm just saying, think through the process right now, but I agree with you.
Yeah. And we'll reach out to the, the health officer on, on the playgrounds and the skate parks specifically, but that was why we hadn't opened those up. I think, I think that they intentionally left those out because of the shared equipment and the smoke and the grouping.
Um, Mayor, can I, can I ask James one other question too?
No, James, finish that.
It's, I have, I made the same observations. In fact, I actually asked people where they were from when I was at Libby. And, um, in, and, uh, I only talked to two or three people, but they definitely, you know, they did not live in Ojai. They, the three I talked to lived in Santa Barbara. But the interesting thing was, James, is there any way we could talk to the, to, um, Captain Rivera, Rivera and find out if, is there any way that we can operate some bicycle police on bikes? And actually do a little more enforcing through the community with that activity or walking, full cars?
They have been walking, at least when I've been over around Libby Park, I've seen the officer.
Yeah. I actually, I was at Libby the other day investigating something and, and ran into the officer. So I know they've been walking them. So, but we can, we can, uh, talk to the chief. He's here, but I won't put him on the spot.
This, this probably don't need to be on horses. That, uh, video on the Oxnard beach of the sheriff's deputies is going worldwide viral.
James, we all ride horses. We'll go down and keep everybody in line.
Well, they, 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 the horse, John, if you didn't see it, what happened was two sheriff's deputies on horses came up to two 90 plus-year-olds sitting by themselves away from everyone else on chairs. And the video shows them saying, you can be here, but you gotta sit on the sand. You can't sit on the chair. And that, that kinda went viral.
I heard about that today.
I'm sure we could say something that would get us in the news too.
I know, I just.
If we want the publicity. Okay. James, where, where are we here?
A couple of other things. One is, um, I think everybody, this was probably a foregone conclusion, but I am announcing now that the, um, there's only one concert scheduled in May at the Libby Ball. And so I, uh, talked with Sterling, that's canceled. It was the main night, Big Bad Voodoo Daddy concert. Um, that, or I should say that will be, uh, rescheduled. It's postponed. The next concert scheduled currently is July 11th. So that hasn't been postponed yet, but we'll continue to monitor. Uh, city commission meetings, we're going to start holding those in May as well. Um, with, uh, if a commission has a time sensitive item, we're going to hold them, uh, via Zoom. So we, uh, we expect to have a planning commission, a historic preservation commission, and an arts commission meeting next, uh, next month. Um, we're still going to try to limit, if, if something's not time sensitive and it's, um, something the public's interested, we're going to try to limit those items. Uh, so the public can participate once this is over. Um, we also have been in contact with the Fourth of July Committee. They're, um, continuing to prepare for the Fourth of July parade. Uh, and we just talked to them and let them know, you know, obviously this all depends on the public health order and they are aware and they will work with us on that in the future.
James, uh, they have publicly stated that they are, say, on social media that they think they're, that they're go ahead. Like they came out and said, nope, fireworks, whole thing, parade's going on. And it was kind of a surprise to me. So I just want you to know that's out there. I hope, I hope they're right, but I don't know if that, I, I think it's probably, we should probably say it's not officially right. I don't think.
Yeah. Yeah. I think the, they were very optimistic when we talked to them, which right now we want people to be optimistic. So, um, so we told them we'd stay in contact and if an order is in effect, that it, it could impact them, but we all hope it's not. So we'll see. Um, uh, the, one of the interesting things in the county's recent order is they talked about one of the next phases will be preparing for potential childcare need. Um, and so we are planning, we've, I've, uh, uh, asked our recreation department to start investigating options there. So we will, uh, try to have, uh, either, either determine if it's something we can do or if it's something we can't do, but we're looking into it to try to get ahead of this next phase. Uh, what we are doing in the meantime is we're preparing virtual recreation programs that will be aired on channel 10 and some other, uh, and on our city websites. Um, just, you know, short, short videos to that, um, with the instructors that, you know, kids and everybody are used to seeing. So we're going to try to work on that, um, in the next couple of, uh, of weeks. Uh, and then just as an ongoing thing, or, or one more, uh, thing is the face covering requirement is in effect. Um, the confusion that a lot of people are having right now is it's only, the only, uh, area requiring it is the city of Ojai. The county is not requiring it, uh, yet, but they encouraged it. Uh, the public health officer this morning encouraged it at the board of supervisors meeting. But, uh, we get a lot of questions of, you know, I'm confused. I went to Oxnard and it wasn't required. The, the, the answer is the city of Ojai, the, the requirements is in effect, but other cities, it's not required yet.
And it's only when doing essential business transit, or business transactions.
Yes, exactly.
And not walking around exercising, you know? We want to point out that since inception, which is, I believe, uh, April 8th is when we put this in, we have flattened the most of anywhere in Ventura County.
You know, one other thing along with that though, you know, I'm out in, I'm out in, in Oxnard and Ventura quite a bit in the, uh, again, it's the same thing. Essential businesses actually are posting that to enter their facilities to protect their employees. They're asking you to wear face covers. So whether the county is dictating or not, I'm telling you that it's an accepted practice that everyone's doing and it's in, from my perspective.
It's recommended by the CDC and I continue to be perplexed why our Dr. Levin doesn't want to follow CDC guidelines, but.
Uh, yeah. Hey, just to, just to pile on, 100 compliments on our move and zero complaint.
Right.
Exactly.
Absolutely, Ryan.
Yeah. And then lastly, you know, we're, we mentioned earlier, we're still operating all, uh, essential city services and we're planning to continue to do that. So, um, if you have building or planning or, or public works needs or, um, or any other, uh, we're still here at city hall and, and we're still available and the, uh, and, uh, well, I think that, that's really it for the, for the, uh, coronavirus response.
Does anybody else have a question to the city manager? Cause if not, we'll move on to the next item. Okay. Here you're not. Let's go to item number three, uh, active transportation project, James.
Thank you. And I do have, uh, our public works director, Greg Grant here, but I, uh, I will, uh, give a brief introduction. Um, I'm sure everybody's aware of this project, but it, it's been a long project. So I'm going to recap it a little bit. The active transportation project is the project that's intended to add bike and pedestrian uh, safety improvements to Maricopa Highway and Ojai Avenue. This update today is in regards to the portion of the project on Maricopa Highway in front of Nordoff High School. Uh, you may recall that, uh, in recent meetings, we've discussed the design of the project in front of Nordoff. And, um, at a prior meeting, the city council gave, uh, the public works director and I direction to work with the district, the school district to develop a design that allows for the best, uh, traffic safety for, um, for cars, bikes and pedestrians while addressing all the concerns of the city and the school district. So what this item is on the agenda for is we met with the, the school district several times. We've developed the design. Uh, the school district actually took the design to their board at, uh, their meeting last week and got feedback in general. The, in general, the school board liked the design, the concern, uh, for them. And I think what will be our main concern is the cost. Uh, the design has, uh, several improvements that were not part of the original design, uh, and, and they have added, uh, an approximate $300,000 cost to the project. Um, the, the reason this is on the agenda is, is the next step is if, if, uh, council likes the design and the school board likes the design, which, which we've gotten the, uh, the thumbs up on that. The next step is this has to go to the state architect who oversees the school parking lot. And, uh, there is a, uh, anticipated $3,500 application fee to submit it to them. Uh, since we last spoke, the school district did talk to the, uh, state architect and determined that they can submit the application. And if it's, uh, if there's a lot of requirements, they can withdraw it without penalty. So, um, that was the main concern. Uh, and so at this time we'll walk through the design and if, if, uh, if council, um, approves the, or we're not formally approving the design, but if council gives us the go ahead to move forward, we would submit, uh, we'd work with the school district to submit to the state architect. But quick, quick question.
May I, pardon me just a second, Bill. I'm, I am in error here. I moved on to this item without going to public comment. So we'll take that now. And, uh, James, we had what, uh, two, uh, letters, but I think that they were both for agenda items. One for the ATP, which is, we're now discussing and, uh, one for the lawn equipment. So do we have any other general non-agendaized items?
No, they were each for, for those, it was those two for those specific items.
Okay. So, okay, Bill, uh, we're back on the subject. Go.
James, is there a need to go to the state architect to go ahead with the demonstration project?
Hmm. Not to go ahead with the demonstration project?
And, and are we going to maybe learn something from the demonstration project that might modify the design?
Well, it's, it's interesting because we've actually been struggling with, uh, and I'm, I'm looking over at the public works director. We've been struggling with the opposite concern, which is we've talked about whether it'd be beneficial to make some of these improvements before we do the demonstration.
Okay.
Yeah. So we've, we've kind of wrestled with trying to do it, it kind of doing it the other way.
Part of the demonstration, uh, the idea of the demonstration is to learn from experience?
Hmm. I, so for us, you know, for us, the main improvement we're getting out of this, um, exercise is, uh, the curb cut near the athletic field. And we've talked about that and we think that's an improvement. You know, regardless of whether.
I would agree with that.
For the rest of the project moves forward. So for us, we were thinking, you know, some of the, some of those things like that we could move forward with in the.
James, would, would that be the optimal improvement?
You're asking, uh, Bill that.
It's our preferred design at this point.
Well, what I, what I'm trying to get at here, I'm trying to, trying to keep focus here, guys. What I'm trying to get at is.
That was a real question, but I, I, I mean, if that, if there was only one improvement that we were going to do pre, prior to the demonstration, is that the one that, I mean, that was a real question in that sense.
Yeah, that's, that's the city's, uh, priority on this.
But it, but in terms of the state architect, if we're doing a temporary demonstration, yeah, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand why that would have to be submitted to the state architect.
Yeah, we, so technically, yes, we could do the demonstration project without submitting anything to the state architect. Um, yeah, we, we could do that. I think for. Um, yeah, we, we could do that, I think for us, for us, probably the driving factor is the timeline for all of these things to happen is very tight. So for us, we're trying to keep things going while other things are happening.
Well, let's talk real quickly about the timeline for the demonstration. I understand that it's been circumvented to only two months instead of six. Am I incorrect in that, um, in that understanding?
No, the demonstration project is still expected to be six, or is still scheduled to be six months, but it's, uh, it's been moved to two months later. So, uh, you know, we were trying to rush to get the project in before school let out to, to see what the impact was. And school is out, uh, you know, unexpected and unplanned. So we, uh, now said, okay, let's, it's more important to have it run during this period when school is going to be in, so we pushed it back two months.
How does that affect, how does that affect all the permitting and all the other aspects of getting this project done as, as it is designed?
Hmm, it's, it's, it's going to be tight, but, uh, we're, uh, we've heard that there's going to be an ex, that there is a potential expansion, extension of time. And I think this is true, everything, when, because of the coronavirus, a lot of timelines are getting extended. So we've, we're, we're, um, we believe that there's going to be time to do it and, uh, that this demonstration project is more effective when people hopefully are back in school.
Mayor, I have a question, so, um, James, is Greg going to, to, uh, walk us through the parking lot? Cause I do have questions.
Yes, he will.
Okay, I'll wait then.
Okay.
Well, before, so we're going to, uh, take it, have Greg, uh, walk us through this and then we're going to talk about if we want to fund this.
Yeah, so the two questions, well, there's two questions today, one is, uh, whether, uh, I think just to move forward, um, the, the $3,500 application fee. It, uh, makes sense, it was our request, we, you know, we fund it and at least get that portion done. The long-term question we don't have to answer today, but we're providing the information we can discuss today is, is how we will fund the full project and, and whether we're going to try to work something out the school district on that.
So, so James, if I may, the decision today is to spend the $3,500, which we've kind of already pre-committed to. I think we kind of told the school district if you wanted to do that, if they took their steps. Then it is come back, once it's submitted to the state architect and then we see what it looks like. And then we have a decision about funding whatever that is, and it's with approval of the state architect?
Yes, and, uh, it, yes, yes, and the, the reason why we needed to bring this back, we need to make sure that it meets council's expectations as well, uh, so.
Right, so we're sending $3,500 off to get a plan, the plan's going to come back to us and then we'll decide whether we embrace it along with the school district to spend the $300,000 to do whatever the, the approved design is at that point.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you.
I have a comment.
Yep.
And I want you to listen to, to my comment very carefully. I want you to, you know, I want you, the public and the school board to be perfectly clear on what this money is for, for the parking lot. This is so that able-bodied teenagers are being driven to school, who are being driven to school. It's to accommodate parents driving teenagers to school or to accommodate newly licensed teenagers. That's what that money is for. And if you don't like it, then just, you know, start giving the kids, we need a paradigm shift. We don't need a new parking lot, we need a cult, a, a shift in culture. I mean, I'm not saying that we shouldn't redesign the parking lot, but what's really needed is a cultural shift. So that in this era of climate change, the kids should be educated, the teachers and the parents should be leading by example. The children, these are teenagers with plenty of energy and with today's bikes and all the gimmicks. It could be, and once we get this demonstration project going and we make it safe, if we can get the majority of kids to ride their bikes to school or to walk to school and teachers once a week to ride their bike. If we could create this wonderful car, bicycle culture, then, then the whole issue of overcrowding and traffic congestion in the parking lot would be resolved. But without that, we don't really have a choice, but this, it seems like, but to spend the money. But that money that, you know, I'm, I'm saying, that's what the money is for, to accommodate all these cars.
Well, I'm, I'm not quite sure what you mean by money, but so I'm, and I personally don't even, I don't want to argue about that, but I do want to bring up the fact that the bicycle coalition and the gentleman that speaks the most about bikes other than you in the community is Russell Sidney. And the last email that all of us received from him clearly stated, he does not agree with this, uh, plan and the way it's being developed. So, um, how do you, how do you resolve that one?
I was going to bring that up after, uh, Greg Grant's presentation. I was going to bring up the points and then I wanted to hear Greg's response. So yes, I'm going to bring it up.
And then let's clarify, I don't know what Money Sues is talking about.
The 35, what was it, 3,500?
Let's take that at the end of the conversation and have the presentation by the public works director and then we can come back to this.
Okay, thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome.
With that, I will hand it over to the public works director. We also, we actually have the, uh, consultant from Alta has, uh, called into the meeting as well, if there's any question. Oh, and, uh, and we do have the public comment on, on this, um, whenever we want to address that, but.
Yeah, I was going to read it after Greg, yeah.
All right, so with that. Okay. This is, this is the map, or the, uh.
Okay, can you just look at my screen?
Oh, you have it. Well, if you start talking, well, let me. So if you start talking.
All right, uh, I guess, uh, this is Greg Grant, Public Works Director, I was waiting for the screen to flip. What's that?
You have mute on. Give us one sec.
All right, technical difficulties.
I'm going to get some water.
I think you got me muted, James, I don't think I am. Bring up audio speaker?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yakos pretty awesome.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
All right, terrific, terrific. Well, uh, and James, can I flip to my screen or are we going to stick with that screen? Okay. But it's still, I was hoping to go to the screen on my, oh, yeah.
Keep your distance.
Okay, so, all right, so go to this one, go to this one.
Go to, um, this and hit share screen.
Oh, I see.
Can I say one more thing while you're doing the, I did listen to the entire school board, um, meeting about this. I listened from beginning to end, so, um, I'm aware of their concerns.
Okay, I think we're setting out to, can everybody, I think they can all see my screen, right, and see that cursor as well? So, and again, Steve Fresson is here, he's the, uh, from Alta, he's the, uh, principal engineer with that firm with, who's done this design work on this, so I'll do a review and any detailed questions could be answered between Steve or myself. Uh, so I just wanted to go over, I think the most pertinent might be to look at the last page of this item. Uh, there's a cost estimate and that cost estimate has four sections to it. The first section being, uh, highlighted is school, parking lots, striping and improvements. That's a subtotal of 126,000. So that is intended to make the adjustments, uh, for instance, where I've got the hand moving and that new driveway cut in this area would have to modify, come up here and eliminate some parking spaces here. The school district's very supportive of this measure, trying to eliminate this barrier so they could come through here. They could move up through the parking lot here and around, they could also go straight or they could actually go straight through the primary means of drop off. You can see they're proposing, uh, to have two drop off lanes in this area. So they can actually come back from church and keep one lane dedicated to one side and one side coming in from the new drive cut. And then there's even options over here to return. So all of this, when you modify this, the, uh, discussion, some preliminary discussions from, uh, the school district had indicated the whole parking lot would have to get flipped and that was that discussion of going department start state architecture for the 3,500 and getting an opinion on that. And, uh, we could also at the same time request, is there something we could do as a temporary measure during the demonstration? Put in the drive cut as temporary measure and try to allow it in without maybe doing the full cost, costed driveway cut. That'd be trickier, ideally we'd install it in a more permanent mode. But it's possible we could do some kind of a temporary, if Caltrans works with us and the department of state architecture and the school district all work with us. So that's what that first item's all about, is 126,000 to re-stripe, uh, and the whole parking lot and slurry the entire parking lot. So it's all clear, bold striping and, uh, provide the ADA spaces that are required. But it's not the full, complete ADA ramps that may be required by DSA, they might kick in additional cost.
Mayor, mayor, as he talks about each item, that $126, $126,000, do we want to make our comments to that or do you want us to wait till the end?
Well, James, how do you think we can handle it?
I like to handle it on the spot.
Whether to go A first.
You want to do it, uh, item by item? If that's the council's pleasure, let's do it.
Yeah, I think item by item makes sense.
I just have, I just have a few questions, you know, regarding striping. So, um, I just, I, James or, uh, Greg, let's start at the top where the new cut, new tie-in is coming in. So I, I see that, we're coming up, yeah, so we're coming up. Then we come all the way up to the top, well, you can come all the way to the top or however you do it. I would prefer to come up, now make a right and go down two, now go down that, no, back one?
Oh, go down one of these two, okay.
Go down that one, see where the arrow is pointing down?
Right.
My concern is, is I don't see any arrows, once I see traffic coming in, into the parking lot. I don't see any mechanism that you have in place or that they've thought through. How do we get across the people coming in? You have an arrow right at that stop sign. At the, it, uh, see the, see your red, uh, see your red arrow, if you go back, now go down a little further, go down towards the street.
Oh, down towards the street, okay, yeah.
Okay, right there, so look at your arrows, you've got an arrow going out, an arrow going in and an arrow making a right turn. How do I get to the arrow making the right turn? Is that just for the people that are on the drop zone coming, uh, east to west? Cause again, I'm just, I'm, I'm lost, do they have to put someone there permanently to direct traffic or how does, how do you solve that corner right there?
Okay, and, uh, clarify that, when you're coming from, southbound on Route 33, we'll be coming from Miners Oaks, it'd be a mandatory right. This entry to church would not be allowed during the peak traffic morning and afternoon. So you'd have to turn in right here, so you'd have to come in.
And how do you stop that?
Uh, we would sign it, we'd have a sign up here that says, no right turn, uh, peak hour, a lot like right now, there's no right turns, uh, I'm sorry, there's no left turn out of this drive and no left turn out of this drive during the peak morning and afternoon. So that would be, uh, you know, all of the traffic should be coming in here this way, you could have a car still coming that way.
Right where you're, right back where your hand was, is that opening wide enough to allow three cars through it?
That, you know, item number, uh, C is a new driveway, uh, installation, it says, uh, I'm sorry, that number C, the third one down is a new driveway installation at the athletic field. The last one is the church drive approach. It has enough room, but we're proposing to widen it up. Right now it's, uh, 28 feet, so it'd be three nine-foot lanes, which would be adequate, but not ideal. So this item widens it up, so you get three 11-foot lanes.
Okay, and then my last question in this area is it shows three drop zones. Am I correct?
Right, the drop zone out here is on Maricopa Highway.
I thought the whole idea behind this, this whole reconfiguring was to remove drop zones on the highway. Am I wrong in that assumption?
I, I think, I understood the drop zone is still popular out on Maricopa, but also to come in to the school parking lot and do a drop zone inside as well. So there's two options there. And then of course, the primary one.
From the city, I mean, from the, uh, school district.
Pardon me?
That was a specific request from the school district when we met with them to provide that.
Yes, the drop zone, so that means you're going to, um, have to route your bicycle lanes around the drop zone?
That was part of the original design to have the drop zone out of Maricopa, to keep the bike lanes tight to the curb, the existing curb and have a drop zone right where all the other proposed parking separation lane is out, uh, throughout the project. So instead of, instead of a parking lane in this area between, uh, church and Pyree, that parking lane becomes a drop off lane.
I, I have a question if I can, uh, Steve, thank you for being here. Quick question for you, how much, you know, with this proposed driveway opening that you've heard us now be arguing about a couple of times back and forth with the school district? Do you see this as a big improvement? I mean, is it a big deal, is it a small deal? For those laymen out there like me, it feels like and looks like it's an important factor coming down Maricopa Highway from that direction. But I'd much rather hear from somebody that knows more than I do about how important this might be.
It is because it gets rid of a conflict zone or reduces it, uh, there at church. So having the circulation, peeling people off from the, uh, northwest to southeastbound movement on Maricopa Highway into the parking lot earlier and ahead of church actually should improve safety for bicycles and also better, create better circulation within the parking lot.
Yeah, that's a real important point.
Yeah, look, I mean, the, the visual test is it looks, you know, simply put, it looks like a great access point before you get to anywhere where there's congestion. You're getting cars in the parking lot at the earliest point from the direction they're coming. Seems kind of essential for safety and it takes them out of the equation, let them circle around the parking lot and get back out where it's easy and flow is consistent. I mean.
And along the lines of what Councilman Wright, uh, Blatt's saying right now would be, that exactly, I think you put it well. As you come from the Miners Oaks side, peel off all that traffic into the parking lot here and that's where the school district is, uh, looking is that when you come in from the Y side is to have a left turn lane added here. And, uh, that's been, that's in the cost estimate as the, the second section, the median at Pyree Road for $90,000. That would allow a left-hand turn lane here, they could come in and do the drop off zone. So it's exactly what you're talking about, peel off the traffic on the two ends, minimize traffic in the center and the congestion that occurs in the center.
So.
Well, I, I would say that, oh, sorry Randy, you go ahead, sorry.
No, 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 Ryan, go ahead, I'm sorry, you had the floor.
Oh, I, I, I was just going to say this, real quick, for what it's worth, I, 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 I really like the way this looks. This is what I thought we were looking at from the beginning and it feels like we labored back and forth and got back to where I thought we were going to be. I am willing to consider if it became necessary, I don't want to go too far. But if we had to reconsider the type of bike lanes we were considering on Maricopa Highway to make up the money to get this traffic flow and make up the, the, the cost for this. I personally, if that was what was presented to us, if it was a lower class, less expensive bike lane situation in order to get this done, that seems to me like a, uh, uh, appropriate balance if that was what came through.
I have one more question while we're still in this same little corner.
I would like to respond to, to what Brian said, if I may, uh, Randy, or is it on the same?
No, it's entirely different because, but this one, you might have something to weigh in on this. I, I see all this striping, I don't see a bike lane inside this parking lot. So if we're channeling people through this new opening, pedestrian, bicycles and whatever, where's the pedestrian lane? And where's the bike lane? Because alls I see are parking stalls.
Yeah, and where is the bike parking? I just want to, can, can I segue in, is it okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, I want complete, I want assured, first of all, I want to respond to what Randy said, I mean, what Ryan said. Ryan, what you're proposing defeats the whole purpose of this plan, which is to make the, this, this four-lane section of the highway safe for students to ride to school. Okay, Tiffany Morris will not support this, the school board, the parents will not support this unless these are guarded, you know, the, the best, whatever the class, class, what is it, Greg? Class?
Class four.
It's class four.
Class four. So it has to be done right, because this is a key connection between the bike trail, Miners Oaks. This is, what we do here is critical, it impacts people coming from five directions. So that's one thing, I don't.
Let's agree that, let's agree that that's your opinion.
Yes, whatever, whatever. Listen, I'm happy to express.
I don't see the bicycle people that you do. I don't see the bicycle people that you do, so I just disagree with your, with.
Okay, well, that, that opinion will come back.
My job is to advocate for the bicycle, for the, for the, the, the people of all ages, for the families, for the children, for the students who want to ride their bike. Okay, so that's my job and I'm going to do it. Okay, then secondly, I want to make absolutely sure that all the points that Russell raised and that Randy raised just now, that the, the access for the bicycles and the pedestrians is safe. Now, from my way of thinking, if the, if we do manage the cars correctly, that in itself does make it safer for the bicycles, correct? If we manage the, the cars. But I still wanna make sure if you can do with, if you, I wanna, you know, I know I have spent so much time out there with Bob Daddy. We've been out there in the heat and we've been out there at seven AM for an hour and a half watching the traffic.
Okay, kind of, you stay with the questions and let.
Well, I wanna make sure, okay, I keep thinking that you can see me because I'm pointing at this map. Okay.
I can see you, but I can't.
The kids coming in from Miners Oaks can, can turn, uh, turn right at that football field, Greg. Remember that was the plan?
Right.
There was a little there, yeah, right there, right there. And that all the kids coming from the other direction and from Puyama and Church Road, that all those kids can have a stress-free, safe experience, that they're not delayed. You know, that, that everything is safe for them.
So we just funnel them all together with cars coming in that big opening? So I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm lost. You can't, no one can convince me it's safe. I'm sorry.
If I, if I can respond for a second to like. Cause I, 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 I agree with you a hundred percent. I'm concerned that if we don't make sure that this works well for cars, because cars are gonna keep going in and out of this parking lot whether we like it or not. If it doesn't work well for cars, then we can't do the improvements for bikes. And I wanna make sure that we're doing the right improvements for the cars so that we can use the money to improve the bikes. And I think, I, I'm, I'm so on board with you. I am probably, I don't know if I'm the only one on this council. I don't wanna say. I'm probably the only one though who rode my bike onto this campus uh, a lot of times, uh, uh, probably more than anybody else. And uh, and when there was no parking there. And I gotta tell you, I think all these things are really neat improvements to make it safer. But personally, I would rather see us be able to afford, if it comes to it, being able to do these couple of cutouts and this more optimal design than not being able to, because we're spending more money on class four, where I also believe that class three might, might work as well on those lane separations, but that would be a review that we'd have to take later. I just didn't kinda say I would prioritize that. I'm hoping we can do both and so far it looks like we can. So I'm totally on board with class four and, and getting this cutout done if we can.
Hey, thank you, thank you. May I add something else? I, I.
Yeah, if it's a question, I'd like everyone, this is not just pointed to you, Susan, but we're, everybody's giving this speech and debating whether or not they like bicycles or cars best. Let's just kinda keep it to the presentation, ask the questions, and then at the end, we can come back and have a nice round of everybody's opinion as to what.
My question to Greg is, can you show the, myself and the public who's very interested in this, the safe access from all directions for the bicycles? I imagine that this intersection will be clearly marked. You know, I'm trying to visualize it. I just want that assurance that, that um, that there's safe access for bicycles, pedestrians, all the way to wherever the bicycle parking is, which should be located, you know, where the kids can keep an eye on their bike, probably close to the classroom. I would think, or somewhere in the, in the, in, end of the parking lot that's closest to the school.
The question is, yeah, where is the safety? Greg, can you answer that?
Sure, and uh, so again, coming in from the uh, north would be, uh, it's really, there's an existing dirt path. This is where pedestrians, a lot of bikes already cut across, but it's just a rough dirt path out here. So the idea is to have cars, bikes and the, and the pedestrians. This is a sidewalk right here. They can walk on the sidewalk. Keep in mind, this isn't a crazy Costco uh, type parking lot. This is much milder, maybe. People remember that in the nineties when it was peaked. But nowadays you see about half of this parking lot full, so you don't see it every, at full capacity, but it's certainly used and there's this ten, possibly fifteen-minute peak that occurs in morning and afternoon. That's what we're trying to accommodate. So that would be in that area. Now, if you're coming in from the Y side, we'll have a two-way bike lane. And actually, we were just looking, the school brought this up. Uh, and I'll flip to the next page at uh, okay, so if you're all with me here, this is now showing a shot for Valerio here. This is supposed to be a two-way bike lane through here. So, but there was a request, hey, could we bring people in at some point earlier? So they cut into the parking lot instead of coming up into this conflict zone and, and going where cars go. So we're looking at that. Creating a cut across this grass area. But so from this side, they come in here, bikes and pedestrians, and from this side, bikes and pedestrians here. And this is kind of where a lot of uh, traffic engineering is evolving to is to try to have multiple routes in. Don't try to pack it all in one location. So the idea is you've got pedestrian crosswalks that are safer now with the flashing beacons, but you, still with four lanes, a bit risky, but safer. And now, when you reduce it to one lane each direction, the safety will really move up. And you could cross the street more safely. Parents will feel safer dropping off their kids over in these opposite sides. So you can have walk-in, bike-in these directions fairly safely, the most safe coming in from the end. So you're gonna have quite a gamut of options this way.
That looks good. The more shortcuts for the kids walking and bicycling, the better. The sooner they can get on campus, the better. That looks great. I think.
There's so many of them.
And, and I think when we talk about bikes, every, some people think this project's all about bikes, but it really is car safety, bike safety and pedestrian. When you have four lanes, we all know that people use it as this passing lane, just like in Oakview, the two highway sections in Ojai Valley are here in Oakview. So when you make this one lane, now you control the speeds and you'll see a significant increase in safety out of these intersections and cars safely coming in A, and then northbound B, northbound C is an option here. And so you've got all various ways to get in and really calm down the traffic that comes into this parking lot.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Greg. I really, I appreciate it. This, by the way, ironically, of all the things we're doing online, it's so much easier to see the map and the diagram on this situation than it is in the council meetings and even in the pictures. It's really nice to have it on a computer screen.
It's wonderful. It's, it's, it's fabulous. Yeah.
We're gonna have a final round of questions or?
Maybe I'll mention, if, if I could get one second here would be, uh, I think we were stopping, just to remind you that cost estimate, the first section is the school parking lot. That's entire. It's assumes DSA requires the full parking lot remodel. So I think uh, I'm hearing that it, it's, it sounds like an action by the council or a direction is uh, whether perceived with that. So that may not be the case, or it may be, right? That was the original question that brought this up.
Well, Greg, I just, my suggestion real quick while we're on it is just if you're gonna submit this as is, someone had better show where the bike racks are and someone better show where the pedestrians are gonna be and someone better show the access for bikes on the west side of that parking lot, because right now you don't show it. So your architect should be taking some notes and maybe come back with a revision, but you're not demonstrating that in this drawing.
Right, this drawing, there's, this will not be what's submitted to DSA. There, uh, our consultant was looking for a direction on it, but they would use something of this realm which has parking lot detail combined. The, the purpose of that other drawing was, it was a late drawing here to try to show what's going on in the frontage. But ideally it would have been incorporated in this parking lot. So that would be a hybrid of these two that go to DSA to help them understand what the proposal is. So just to flip back to that cost estimate, yeah, first section, one hundred twenty-six thousands all in the parking lot, assuming a, a full remodel, but with DSA, I think it's a little bit like going to Caltrans, you might not know what else they come up with.
I have a question on the cost estimate, Greg, since you're on that. Okay, I just wanted, you know, I always have a problem sometimes. Last summer, my family's company uh, did a seal coat, slurry coat and striping together for half the size of the one hundred and sixty-four thousand you're quoting there, for half the price. That was last summer. So I'm wondering where these numbers are coming from on cost. I'm always a little concerned when I see private sector numbers being a lot higher than private sector numbers.
I'm serious. Can you say it again, Bill, too? You said it was half the size and what?
Last, last summer, uh, our, our company, uh, I have, I'm looking at the, at the quote right here, had a parking lot half that size, about eighty uh, five thousand square feet and, uh, and uh, we did a, a single coat sealer, slurry sealer plus re-striping for uh, fourteen cents a foot.
Did you pay prevailing wage?
No.
This is a prevailing wage job.
I know, I just, I'm expressing concern. And then uh, we just bid it out.
And Bill, it might be handy to just flip that contractor to me. We'll just get a, try to get a little more accurate estimate as well. We're not trying to.
Okay, and the other thing is, I'm not a big fan of speed bumps. They're usually designed to keep people from cutting through things. We don't really have a cut-through problem here. Is, is, uh, is there, I, I was wondering about the case for speed bumps.
That's what you and nobody's barged there.
Steve, do you want to address the speed?
Sure, they're there to keep the high school students from using it as a little speedway. That parking area there adjacent to the ball field or to the soccer field is where the students currently park predominantly. Also, going back to your comment about the cost of slurry sealing, keep in mind that you're, they're pretty much giving away oil right now. When we put this together, the cost for this, the uh, futures market for oil isn't where it is today.
That was, that was one of my points.
Cause I was. Yeah, I mean, it just, we live in weird, yeah, we live in odd times right through here. Who knows?
I was quoting a price from last summer when obviously prices were a lot higher. Yeah, okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, well, sure, yeah, I, I was gonna try to run through that cost estimate and if you guys wanna ask questions uh, as each item comes up, or do you wanna go through it first?
I just have a general question before you go to the cost. May I? Yeah, Mayor?
Yeah, she may, but I, I'm not sure that we need to debate the budget of this as much as the desirability of the design. It's gonna get submitted to the state because it may come back with some changes and change the cost.
I agree.
We'll have to decide whether or not we can afford it.
I agree.
Well, Greg, Greg, what I wanna ask is, maybe I could meet with you, you and I and Russell could meet. I don't know if you're in receipt of his letter and just go over the concerns. You and I could, and Russell could meet. Would you be willing to do that?
Uh, we could do that or else, uh, you know, we, we have the, you know, the uh, email. We've got the information. I know Russell's had input before, so we're, I think between the consultant, myself and the school, we can all take a look at that and probably uh, digest it pretty well.
I just, you know, I just wanna make sure. Okay, thank you. All right.
I think the, the feedback we're looking for at this time is if this design is uh, supported by council to move forward with this DSA uh, application. And I think the uh, our thought is we're gonna try to work with the school district to identify whether uh, what level of funding they would be willing to provide uh, for this and what funding we can provide for this. Uh, but uh, the, the, so we're just looking for the direction to submit to DSA and um, to negotiate with the district on, on these improvements.
James, don't echo in Greg's microphone.
And I guess on that note, I'll briefly mention, I think we're on the cost estimate. The first section was the school parking lot striping. As we mentioned, there's variables to that. Second portion was median at Pyri Road. So I think that second design is helpful and that shows here's Valerio Road. So you can see, right now this is a long median with no left-hand turn. So this adds a left-hand turn here. It also eliminates the median through this area. The school was very interested in allowing this parking lot is used heavily by staff. It's fully occupied in general. It seems to be a preferable parking lot for staff. So that will allow them to come from this side and turn in, which is common. Right now they're going up. They can't turn left here, so they go up and increase congestion here or add to congestion doing U-turns to come back this way. So that was a request. So the removal of this median as well as this left-hand turn lane was estimated at ninety thousand dollars.
All right, Greg, real quick. Okay, that, that added cost for that addition that the school district asked, because I didn't really understand. I did, I wasn't sure. So it's ninety thousand is our added cost to do what they wanted? Or is that part of what they wanted and part of us just reorganizing what we already had? That's what I wasn't sure about.
That was all new work.
And that was a specific request by the school district.
Right, not proposing the original concept design.
But I will say, what, what, can you, sorry, we're shuffling with the volumes here, but uh, I do wanna note that we uh, we walked, walked through that with uh, Steve, our consultant, who's on the, on the uh, meeting as well. And we talked about whether each of these designs would improve the traffic, safety for bikes, pedestrians and, and cars. So yes, it was uh, requested by the school district, which is one point that we'll make when we're talking about costs, but we do wanna note that it isn't, we did do it as an improvement to the project.
So do we, at what point are we going to have a motion as to whether we like the design and want to proceed with the next step in due diligence going to the state architect? Are, are we getting close to that?
We're getting very close to that.
A lot about money, but that is gonna change both by the pandemic as well as how much we got in our bank account.
Right, and that, that if, part of this was just to make sure we understood clearly. Number A, parking lot, the B was hit median, C is the new driveway installation at the athletic field. That's what was originally proposed in the concept previously. And then lastly was D, church street driveway approach. I think it's recognized that it's narrow there. It's it, it's narrower at the driveway approach, at the sidewalk and driveway approach, and then it kicks back open for the, for the driveway. It's about thirty uh, plus feet wide right in this area. But actually, there's a little bottleneck here. So to improve that is at thirty-one thousand dollars. So those are the four improvements altogether. Sure, I, I don't wanna use the O word, but uh, that, that's the ultimate option if we went to it, right? So, but uh, and what, if we gotta pick and choose, uh, that's different.
Mayor, I have one, one more question regarding funding. I just, Greg, just because Ryan touched on it, I just, I just wanna be clear, the, anything that's based on Maricopa Highway, um, technically could be paid for through the grants. Am I correct? ATP money, it's already there. It's just a matter of do we wanna spend money there versus spending it downtown or spending it somewhere else. But the, but the money's allocated. So um, that ninety thousand, correct? And the, maybe that's it. Um, I, I, this hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars is not covered in the ATP grant funding. So why are we thinking that the total of three hundred and sixty, unless you've got a, unless, unless you know something about the funding that we don't know? How do you take a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars off of highways and streets and put it into parking lots? How do you?
Right, I, I would recap that as, yes, it's three hundred and sixty thousand total that the grant would certainly cover the second item, the median by Pyri. It would recover the new driveway installation. We had talked about that and the church street driveway.
What, what new driveway?
The new driveway by the athletic field, the new driveway cut.
Okay, but that's not on public, that's not the public right of way. That's a private property. That's school board property.
Right, the, the primary cost is the driveway cut. It's modifying the curb and the sidewalk and the area behind the sidewalk to get it up onto that area. And we have, yeah, so when you get onto the high school, uh, there is some flexibility with some of the funding that would cover some of the high school costs as well.
Through the ATP, I wanna be clear. It's ATP money I'm talking about, not city money.
Uh, true, I think for simplified thing, the, the, the more complicated side of the ATP funding is there's three funding sources, ATP, something called CMAC and TDA, and the TDA portion has some more flexibility in it.
Yeah, Randy, those kinds of questions can still come up at a later date. Right now, the question is, is, is the council generally in agreement that this design is what we want to submit to the state architect?
And I'll sow for purposes of trying to get things going.
Okay, is there a second to them? I second them. Okay, now continue.
Okay, I have a question of Greg. Greg, may I ask a question? At once, you know, once this design is implemented, as it's implemented, if issues arrive, there's, there's room for, there's room for change, for tweaking it, correct? For example, if there's, if there's a conflict between kids uh, that are on foot or on a bike, the cars, things like signage and there's other ways, you know, to handle that conflict. You can do that, right? things like signage, and there's other ways, you know, to handle that conflict. You can do that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and that's the reason for the demonstration grant as well.
Yeah. All right.
Well, I don't know. I don't know where you're talking about doing the, um, adaptation, Souza. But if we're going to spend, how many millions is this, Greg? I would think.
The entire project from El Roblar to the Y to Gridley, the entire project's two point five. I don't want it. See that's run it just two point five minutes.
That, that we would want to know exactly what we're doing and not, uh, be caught, um, shooting from the hip or modifying in the field. So again, I just, Greg, I really, because I don't, I never get a yes or a no from you. I get vague responses. So I'm going to hold you to a yes or no to my questions. The one hundred and twenty-six dollars is not our money. We will not spend city money, ATP money, or any type of grant funding in that parking lot. Can you say yes or no to that?
That's a decision.
I think.
City council.
Yeah. And I think, I think the challenge of that, I'll, I'll answer that. The, the challenge to that is we're still trying to see what we can get the school district to cover. And then the question will be, can the remainder, can we move some grant funding around? Or are we going to have to come out of pocket? And that'll be part of this next, that discussion, uh, once we get the, the design approved by the DSA.
All right, James, because it felt like we were voting on that tonight. I think that's the confusion. Are we not, we're not deciding tonight on whether or not to spend up to three hundred grand on this parking lot, or are we deciding that? I don't think we.
No, we're not.
No. We aren't, yeah, we aren't deciding it. We're just, um, determining, it's a factor in whether we want to move forward. So we're, we're saying whether we want to move forward.
Cause, cause Randy, I gotta be honest. I, I just want to say this, Randy, I am totally with you. I, this was voted on my first council meeting when I got onto this council. I didn't see it before. I, I still feel a little off balance about everything that's being proposed and not totally understanding it. Uh, and, and aside from that, a little bit of a, uh, being off balance by the school district's responses to us as well. And I am not, I, 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 I just think that the downtown area is where we have so many benefits from this money. And this Maricopa Highway area is not where we nearly benefit as much from this. I definitely want to see it take care of safety, bicycles and kids going to Noroff. Other than that, I, I'd, I'd hope that we are focusing most of these resources on the downtown area. And I'm not totally convinced we're doing that. It's really hard. I, I mean, I'm, I'm studying my tail off and it's really hard to understand exactly what's going on move to move and, uh, where we are. So, um, I, I do not want to look the gift course in the mouth and say we don't want state money. And I definitely think it can beautify the downtown area and help all the merchants and the, and, and really make it great. But in this whole section, man, I, I don't want to come out against this, but I'm having a hard time still maintaining my support for it because it's getting really confusing and uncertain. I think, I think Randy feels the same.
So I just, because Mayor, we're going to be voting in a minute and, um, you, you guys obviously know where I'm going to vote on this. But just so I get it off my chest, I think the most important thing that we're, that we're not really recognizing in this whole aspect, in this area of our community is we're a rural community and we pride ourselves on open space. And we pride ourselves on all of these arguments over climate change and, and over air quality and over, you know, uh, again, I agree, children's safety and bicycle safety and pedestrian safety. I don't see how this enhances any of that. We take a rural community and we urbanize it by reducing this and throwing these trees in and throwing multiple bike lanes in, in this specific area. If you want bike lanes, and I've said this all along, I'm a, I'm a big, probably one of the biggest fans for it. You can put bike lanes in and you can get children to these schools safely, under the conditions that are present. Spending all of this money for this, and now we're going to throw more money? I'm sorry. I will not support it. Just can't.
Well, what I, what I completely disagree with you about, Randy, is that what we have is urban. And we're trying to move away from urban in the, in the way that this entire corridor is designed.
Well, I think you better drive it. You better take a look at the mountain range. You better take a look at the open space and you better look at what you're doing. You're gonna drive down Creek Road. You know that? As much as they needed that to, to manage, um, safety and speeding, you've done the same thing. You drive down Creek Road. You don't look at the environment. You look at these little yellow things down the middle of your highway. Just drives me crazy. Now we're going to do it on both sides of this highway.
Okay. We, we, we got that part of the argument. Uh, is there anyone else who would like to weigh in? Uh, uh, I would agree with, uh, uncommon as is Bill. I would agree with you that I think a four-lane undivided or partially undivided highway that we ran, what, a quarter of a mile or something over there, uh, was urbanizing the thing. Whether or not that it's worth the amount of money that's going to go into it at the end, there's going to be a second bite at the apple, Randy, uh, when it comes back. But if we don't get this, at least agree that this design is, what did, Bill, what did you call it? The optimal or the something?
Oh, don't do it, Randy. Don't do it, Johnny.
Yeah, come on, come on, Bill. Well, what, what did you call it?
I call it the optimal. First, first choice.
Oh, there it is again.
So optimal model for safety and for traffic movement and, uh, both for bicycles, pedestrians and cars. Uh, we've already spent that money till for thirty-five hundred dollars, uh, and having a review of it. If you're in the development business, this is part of the due diligence and you may have to jump the project at some point and say, wait a minute, the soils test came back, but yeah, I'm not saying we have to have one here. But I've had projects where after we did the soils tests and all of the due diligence, we said, well, it's a nice idea, but we're, we don't see it working. Or we went ahead and maybe made some money on the deal. So uh, I would, uh, I would support this getting. And if it turns out.
Yeah, it's not for due diligence.
Too expensive. Uh, it's too expensive. Uh.
Well, I don't disagree with that. I, again, my concern through this whole process is whose money are we spending? That's why I tried to get, um, yes, those versus ambiguity and vagueness out of our, out of our, uh, civil engineer there. But one last thing, I just want to understand this and I want to state it clearly, restricting flow. Okay. May make it to a degree safer, but I believe you're going to have backup. You're going to have more congestion. You're going to have worse air quality. There's a lot of other things that aren't being studied along with this. And I think that's where we're not doing our due diligence.
Well, a lot of that has been studied and the evidence does not support those conclusions, right? Today.
No, I disagree, Bill.
Okay. And there'll be an opportunity to make those arguments later. We don't even know if we can do this. Unless we want to jump the whole idea of going to the state architect.
And, 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 you know, we're, and then to add in, Randy, I, I am where you are. I, my opinion is I'm all for it because somebody else is paying for it and it's a good idea as long as we do it exactly right. And I'm not convinced yet we're doing exactly right.
That's what you, that's why you have due diligence to learn.
I agree. And I, I, hey, I agree. I'm not, I'm not saying it's a bad project. I just am not totally.
This, this motion is about due diligence. That's all it is.
And I agree. And I'm, and, and you'll see how I vote. I'm totally on board. I mean, I agree.
Okay. Uh, I think we ever, Souza, are you still out there?
I am definitely out there. May I say one more thing?
Yeah. Okay. Say it quickly.
I'm almost ready to vote for it, but it's, we have to acknowledge that this is the kind of project that I wish that we had people weighing in at the podium, people who have been studying this. There are many people in the community and there's a core group of about twelve bicycle advocates who have studied this. And it's unfortunate that we can't receive their input at this, at this moment.
Are they, are they opposed to this design?
Not necessarily, but they may have questions that would, and they may have comments such as Ro- Russell did to help clarify this.
Okay. Well, there's still time to do much of that. Yeah. So.
And, and, and the reality is for the moment, this is the best it could be because as Bill would never say, it's almost optimal.
We hope it's optimal, but we don't know yet. Okay.
Almost.
Okay.
Ten optimal, if that's a word.
Okay. Uh, we're going to be spending thirty-five hundred dollars. So I guess we should have a roll call. So the clerk, call the roll.
Mayor Johnston?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Did, did he vote? I couldn't hear him.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Haney?
No.
No. And Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Yes. So to confirm, just because I can't hear you very well, I have a no vote from Councilmember Haney, a yes vote from everyone else.
That is correct.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Okay. We are now going to the next item that, uh, was put on by, at the request of, uh, Bill and Randy, I think, uh,
Yes.
To talk about the, uh, gasoline engine landscape equipment that we have outlawed or are trying to decide when to start enforcing.
Yep. It was effective, uh, yesterday, right?
Yeah.
Right. And I thought the last time we talked about this, like two weeks ago, we decided to tell the staff to, uh, use education and sell the program. Don't just go around telling everybody and.
Right.
Get through this pan- pandemic thing. Uh, so, uh, James, you having, saying, or should we go right directly to the topic?
Uh, the only thing I'll add is that, yes, it, it, um, went into effect yesterday. We, uh, our focus, uh, at this point has been, we've been, uh, scheduling, uh, appointments with the businesses and making sure that they have electrical equipment is the first step. If they don't have electrical equipment, then obviously we know that they would not be, uh, following this. So we've been, uh, doing inspections. We've met with, with several, uh, and we've been confirming that they have the electrical equipment. Uh, and that is what we've actually began, you know, that, that was going to be the first couple of weeks of enforcement, uh, you know, quote unquote enforcement here.
And, uh, good, uh, is it true? We had one public comment and can I just ask a question? Mayor, is that all right?
Yes, go, Bill.
So James, I, um, is it true that, you know, for that one type of specialized equipment called trimmer mowers, that there's only one manufacturer of that particular implement and, uh, electric?
So the, the challenge, so what I, what I could say about that is we were initially told that there were none. And so we, we spent a couple of minutes researching it. We found, we found one. So we, we, and it's mentioned in the public comment that they spoke with, with us. And so we, we, uh, we said, hey, you know, there is a trimmer mower available. It's electric. Uh, as the public comment noted, it has a, you know, the, the one that we found doesn't have as much, um, range as a gas one. It has a, I think it's an hour and it can be doubled to two hours of operation. Um, but to, we haven't done the research to be able to say that that's the only one. That was just a.
My, my only comment is, is that that actually wasn't anything specifically listed. It's a very specialized piece of equipment. And not generally, it's not widely used. I, I would be okay with, uh, you know, kind of backing off that particular while we did some more due diligence on true availability. I, I don't like to be in the position of having people get only one, uh, you know, have only one supplier. So that kind of caught my attention and I'd be fine with kind of backing off on that for a while, while we figure out exactly what the competitive environment is.
And to our knowledge, this is the only one that we are aware that is operating in Ohio. The only person who's contacted us with this. So the air quality impact of one person operating.
Pretty minimal.
Pretty minimal.
Uh, James, uh, James?
Yes.
Uh, have you checked with, uh, what's the fellow's name from the, uh, Green Zone? Uh, I have one of these, uh, battery operated string mowers, uh, and it, uh, works fine. You know, I have two batteries. One's in the charger while I run the other one and I do quarter to half acre with it. So I know it's, I mean, there's, the, the availability is there. I think the question is how soon we would, you know, how advanced the technology is.
Yeah. And that's a good, that's a good resource. We are still in contact with the, uh, Dan from the Green Zone. So we'll reach out to him and see if, if he's aware of multiple options for these.
Yeah.
So why don't we go slow on this and carry it to the next meeting when you have a chance to see whether or not we can, there is a competitive product.
Yes. Yeah.
Souza, did you have something?
Yes. Yes. Did you, uh, investigate goats? Those are a great alternative for weedy baitment. And you can rent them, you know, by the hour for the task.
Yeah.
And so I think we should include that. And I, I know there's people doing that. So that's a, I, I'm afraid if we start making exemptions, if right now there's only one, but that could lead to more.
Yes.
Stay away from that.
Okay. We'll investigate, um, the availability and, and the runtime and how many options there are of those electric.
And include goats. I'm serious about that.
Well, yeah. And I suspect goats would be more expensive. You have to ship them over and then you have to.
Maybe some goats in the neighborhood even.
Well, you have, you, you have goats for different types of applications too. So, um, yeah, unless you can train a goat to only chew the grass at an inch and a half, I'd be happy to.
I had a question for, uh, Mr. Summers, Mayor.
Well, once, um, I think I had the floor, but.
Okay.
Well, you took the floor. I think Bill has the floor and then we'll come back to you, Randy.
Uh, Matthew, uh, what's the situation in terms of enforcement for property owners? That just, um, you know, they'll hire one person, they'll get cited. This, we've seen this with the blowers already. Then they just hire somebody else that doesn't know about what the law is. In other words, they, they just keep rotating who they're hiring, including people that are pretty far away to come in, uh, just as a means of, uh, you know, not having to, uh, you make a good faith effort. Do, do you feel, is there any, any role in looking at the, um, culpability of, uh, the, um, the property owner hiring commercial users in a way that is seeking to evade enforcement?
Yeah, we can take a look at that. We can certainly cite the property owner if we can prove that. Uh, I recognize proving that may be a bit difficult, but if you had two or three cases where a property owner hired, closely hired outside people, um, after the first time they're on notice, they have to direct anyone higher who is providing any kind of landscaping service, that they have to use electric powered equipment. The second, the third time they've had somebody on their property who is not using electric equipment, the argument that they didn't know disappears. So with the right facts in place, we can enforce against that. We can also use the allowance under section five fifteen oh three of the ordinance for the city manager to create regulations to implement it, to create, uh, a process requiring property owners to be aware of the issue by notice and then enforce it against them to the extent that they're aware. So there are tools there, not just the operators.
Thank you.
If I could add one thing real quick, just, uh, that gives us the opportunity to mention, we, um, we, we are continuing the, uh, electric leaf blower enforcement, which has been in place for, you know, for quite a while. And we did cite someone, uh, last week who ironically, as you mentioned it, um, they, the, they said that their gardener was coming up from LA and, and that they weren't aware of the, uh, restriction. So we, uh, encouraged them to start telling people, other, other people in LA not to come to Ohio with gas powered equipment.
Hey, for what it's worth, James, I talked to Lackey again at APCD about a sticker that could be countywide. I talked to some people on the county, uh, and they, our, our local, uh, environmental committee who's supported it as well. And maybe it's something we end up doing. I'm, I'm still, uh, as silly as I kind of think it is, hoping we get an Ohio centric, uh, electric sticker and all that equipment throughout the county at some point.
Okay. Randy, you have something you wanted to say?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So, um, I've looked into this equipment. There's got to be between ten and thirteen varieties. I've priced them all. I've met with Dan. Dan actually held a demonstration at Sarrazoody Park about two months ago. These gardeners in this community know exactly what's out there. They know exactly what the cost of this is. And, um, and I just think that when it comes to commercial operations, James, that you need to be enforcing this. And then if we want to give anyone a break and the people that are asking for it are residential users. And again, in hindsight, I have no idea why we went after residential users when we can't even enforce commercial. So my two cents is let's figure out how to get these people that are providing services in this community, gardening services, get them licensed, get their equipment inspected and get them tagged. I can't believe that'd be that difficult to do.
And I'll note as to that point, the, um, the request for the trimmer mower was a residential user. So I just wanted to point that out. That wasn't a commercial user. Right.
I, and I want to note, I did not call the city about a residential use this week on electric, or not electric mower. They have a, I had been.
You've taken the week off.
I called about you, Casita, but I'm not calling about my name.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So what, uh, what is the ask? What are we here to do on this?
Yeah. Good question.
Well, I think we're gonna, we're gonna go easy on the trimmer mower while we get more information. I wanted to ask about property owner enforcement. That, that was, you know, and as far as residential, uh, you know, we're talking about, uh, a health condition that is aggravated by air pollution. Uh, that is, uh, you know, and I just, I just feel that, um, residential homeowners should be making the adjustment, you know, we're going to go easy on them, you know, reasonably. We're going to inform, we're going to focus on education. But I've gone out and spent some money, you know? But I've gone out and spent some money, you know, with a, you know, hedge flipper and a mower and 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 frankly, the the more I I think what we learned is that these small mo, these small gasoline engines are in fact, they're obsolete. They're buggy whip technology. They're overly polluting and they and they're they're a lot more trouble to operate. Your productivity increases using electric. So I even went out and bought an electric tiller. Works great.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I'm I'm.
Were we asking anything?
Can I, let me ask this, Johnny. Is James, is, I mean, should we wait till the end of the emergency declaration to enforce this? Should we start now? Are you asking us that question? Is that what we're answering today? Or is it, I'm not totally clear on that, so.
Well, Bill and Randy asked to have it on the agenda.
And I agree. I will, and I will say, I said too, because it was in the newspaper, that we were going to start enforcing it yesterday. But I know I I had a, I I talked to a couple of people who weren't necessarily on board with it, and a couple others who were like, hey, how are we supposed to try and figure out how to get this taken care of right now? And of course, that was maybe a couple of weeks ago. Arguably, they've had time now. But it's also not easy to, I mean, I went to the Home Depot on Sunday. There was a two hundred person line outside.
Mail order works great.
Yeah, that, and you know what, Bill, that might have worked. I mean, you know, unfortunately, that was why, you know, that was where I was. I don't disagree. I just feel that at least a small delay, given the certain, I mean, everything's been delayed. It doesn't make sense that we would enforce this.
Yeah, this is not a problem. So the enforcement, if it goes, you know, it is, we take a pause until the pandemic thing gets under somewhat under control, and we start to reopen businesses, then we should sit down and talk about this again without, you know, using a hammer on people, but.
I I don't think we should use a hammer, but we should also recognize that air pollution by, you know, peer reviewed studies does aggravate your susceptibility to respiratory illnesses.
Well, could I offer this? Maybe if we want to look as a middle ground, maybe we say until the pandemic and the emergency is declared over, we hand out warnings, but we're still enforcing it and warning people, and then we decide to enforce with whatever is a fine or more robust punishment afterward. We wait to do that until the pandemic emergency is lifted.
Except for leaf blower.
So. Well, yeah, and I agree. That was done, that should have been a long time ago. Bill, you you know how I feel about that, especially our outside agency.
So I could I could live with that, even though I don't necessarily agree with it.
I don't know. That's the only thing I can think of in the middle of it.
But not leaf blower. Yeah.
So, Mayor, the only thing, what I'm hearing, and I'm in agreement, but aside from if code enforcement comes up upon a commercial maintenance operator, I'm not inclined to give them a warning when they've had more than enough time to figure this out. So I'd be more inclined to to make sure that they're required to have within a two week period to get that license. So we at least know who's operating in our community.
And we do, and we do.
Then after that, then look at registering their equipment.
And we focus on, and I would focus on what Ryan suggested, this for residential.
Okay, well, I I think that the city manager now gets the gist of this. The law is the law. It's in place. Education and persuasion is a good approach, but those where mild therapy is not working, he needs to up the amped age a little. And I I agree with Randy. I think, don't think that this makes a very good argument for people in the commercial business who do this every day, eight hours a day, as opposed to a homeowner. But the homeowners need to get on board too, because, you know, you can have the whole, everything, including a lawnmower, even though we don't want to encourage lawns in a drought threatened area, but for less than a thousand dollars, you can have almost all those tools and several batteries and the charger. So it's not a unreasonable burden.
Yeah, Mayor, I don't know if you can see that I've been raising my hand.
I couldn't, but now that you've made it to me, go ahead.
Okay, what I want to say is I want to have the same standard for residential and commercial, and I'll tell you why. If the residential people don't have the proper tools, they can either do it by hand or let their garden be a little bit wild. There is no reason to to continue to pollute.
Okay, so we talked that one to death. I think we're okay then, James. The law is still the law. You use good judgment, and during the pandemic, let's not pick on people who are supposed to be staying safe at home.
So do we tell James, James, do what's right, just don't be arbitrating capricious? Is that what we?
Yeah, I think that's.
Not it. I get it. I'm on board. I get it too. That's exactly what I did with my neighbors the other day. I was like, I don't really know what to do.
Listen, we're, it's so crazy. We have gardened for hundreds of years without gas powered tools.
I know.
There is no need for all this.
Yeah, okay, let's go to, we're now ready for council reports. Randy, you want to kick off on reports?
Oh, I'm done.
You're done? Okay. Ryan?
I did have an APCD meeting today. Things are still moving along. I will say we're replacing a lot of equipment. And and I have I have asked, and I'm hoping to really get this data, I don't think it'll be super impactful for Ventura County and Ojai, but I have asked Locky a number of times and said, look, this is the only experiment we're ever going to have where there's no cars on the road, see what gear looks like. I really want us to use that data to be, you know, hey, here's what we can shoot for in a hypothetical. The one other thing, and this may be a future council item, but I don't know, I I just, I've, everyone I'm talking to, I keep hearing this idea. Besides what I said last week, that I think Ojai is going to be a targeted area for people with all this pent up demand to go out of town, it's going to be a very hot place for people to go, I think. And I'm hearing from hotel people and recreation people, there's a lot of reservations coming in in that June June timeframe, June first on, because there's a lot of people all over that want to go. But in the longer term, I hear everybody talking about how this may reorient so many businesses, especially in California, especially in Southern California, from a traffic commute business to a stay at home business. My girlfriend, I'm I'm literally living in her office right now. My house feels like it a little bit, and their business is more productive than ever. And they had, the the beginning of this year, they were offering stay at home days instead of vacation days, like these half kind of days. Now they're talking about giving you a couple of months of it during the year. I just think it's a reminder for this community, especially coming out of this, especially in the diversification of economy, broadband is going to be such an important issue for this community to secure. I think those same reasons why we may be a really great place to come visit coming out of this is another good reason why people or businesses are going to look and say, this might be a great place. Hour and a half from Metro, hour and a half from the airport, far enough away where you don't get all of those things. I just think there is not going to be any more important time than coming out of the coronavirus epidemic for us to make sure we invest in broadband. So I want to remind everybody of that.
Okay, thank you. Suzie, you have any report?
Yeah, I just want to express my appreciation to the California Association of Governments and the people that put on the Go Ojai demonstration project virtually, the workshop. And I want the public to know that this is still online. If they have, is that correct, James? It's on the city website, and they can watch it if, and I I think the questions that were asked, the concerns that were raised about the reduction of the four lanes, the two lanes, the consultants did, in my opinion, did a great job answering those concerns. And I think if the public watches it, they'll understand the project better. And so, and I want to, I I I'm assuming that the whole council did watch it, right? If you haven't watched it, I hope I hope that you will. And Bill and I are are still working on the animal ordinance that we believe that, correctly if I'm wrong, that it shouldn't be brought back until the meeting is open to the public, but I've actually been collecting quite a bit of information on the Animal Kingdom page. People are weighing in. They're becoming more aware of it.
Okay.
And and all the other things, we're we're quietly working on things that the loose ends a few months ago.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Bill, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to alert the public. Susan and I have been going back and forth on this. We've been hearing, getting information. We're collecting more information. You know, there's a pattern here with the Trump administration. They're trying to do more extraction activity in the national forest at the same time that they're going to reduce the ability to enforce, you know, the rules. So they're talking about cutting cutting us off in terms of not having a ranger station here where, you know, the primary traffic entry into this part of the national forest. At the time, at the same time, there's discussion at the highest levels about uranium mining again, not to mention what was earlier done about opening up mineral rights and everything. So we're seeing a pattern of things coming from the federal government in terms of ultimately threatening our watershed and our our quality of life. And we're, you know, I think, I just want the public to know, we're watching this very carefully and looking to try to engage in alliances with the city of Ojai, with with other watchdog groups, because the patterns become quite clear. You know, let's cut back on regulations and oversight while we step up extraction activities that are, you know, have a lot of risk of environmental damage. So it's something we need to watch very carefully.
Especially while we are distracted by other things, and the federal government is trying to ask some things while we are looking this way and not understand a hundred percent. Thank you.
I just want to make sure we're we're not, we're not distracted.
Okay, thanks, Bill. I have just one item, kind of a shout out to some citizen volunteers that there were some concerns expressed about the high school graduation being disrupted. And so some well meaning and hardworking citizens got together with the school board and got their concurrence and then met with our staff. And what they are going to attempt to get done is to get a graduation roll done on little banners and hang them downtown in the arcade. And the festivals who had that particular time slot reserved, you know, they're not having their concert, and they have relinquished their their rights to the to hanging the banner. And so that's a nice grassroots citizen operation, and I wanted to say thank you. Nigel Chisholm is from the mine, has been one of the prime movers that has done that. City managers report.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. I'm going to try to make it quick. Wanted to show this real quick. There's two things. One is on the right. Amidst all the challenges, we wanted to take the chance to mention some good news. The city received an eight hundred sixty four thousand dollar grant to remove invasive plants and restore the natural environment in Middle Stewart Canyon Creek, and that also will help with fire fire risk mitigation. So we're excited about that, and we wanted to give a shout out to the crew, the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy Conservancy and PAX, which includes a a member of our our climate committee, Brian Hawley.
We also helps with Aqua for Recharge.
Yes, yes, that's the plan. So we, we.
James, I'm going to interrupt you. Brian Hawley, Brandon Titus, get a huge shout out over at PAX for landing this. I'm so excited that a guy who I put on the climate committee, who is a long friend of mine, one of my, I just, a fantastic guy. I, he called me right before this went public, and I've never heard so much excitement in his voice that he said on the second try, they got this. This is really cool, and and Bill, especially to you, you know, we we we've been talking, this is money for the same place we've all been looking at for a while. I I'm so excited about it. So really great news. Sorry, but go ahead.
It's it's funny.
James, one quick question. Who's going to manage the grant?
So the it will be, Greg Grant and myself will be will be responsible for managing it.
Well, let's leverage some of volunteer help. A lot of people would like to leverage this money with kind support.
Yeah, that's such a good point, and I've already heard from three people who said, hey, we heard there's money back there. What can we do to help?
Right, exactly. So we wanted to mention that. The other thing we wanted to mention is we keep hearing from people, it's coyote season, and a lot of people aren't aware of it. So we posted these signs reminding people, but, you know, we know there's always, you know, there's always going to be people who haven't heard. So we wanted to take a chance to say it here and then ask people to to remind people and share it with with people who maybe aren't aware, but it's it's quote unquote coyote season, so please be aware and look for the signage out on the trail. And then just a couple. Oh, yes.
We put a sign up there in conjunction that says, let's give the trail back. Maybe nature wants that trail back.
Nature's taking it back.
I I do keep hearing that, you know, I think we had, we had a bunch of lizards here last week, so apparently nature's taking taking over. The other thing we wanted to mention is our, we at Budget Committee, we agreed to solicit new or to recommend to council that we will solicit new auditors. So we have started that process. And we've had our current auditors for several years, way longer than is recommended, so that will be coming to council for a for a contract recommendation at a future meeting. And then last, it is weed abatement season. We we all say there's there's no more fire season anymore, or or what I should say is all year round in Ojai is fire season. So we used to say this would be the start of that season, but it's year round. So we are starting our weed abatement program. Our code enforcement officer is doing inspections now, and we will send letters out between now and May thirty first. So if you get one, please, please remember, we're just trying to mitigate the fire risk. And if everybody does their part, it will make Ojai safer. So that's all I have.
Okay, do we have any requests for future agenda items?
I I do. I just, James, do you need council support to write those two letters? The one for to express our concern about the increased uranium mining on the Lake Casita's watershed and of course, the reduction of services.
The Forest Ranger one, we identified that it falls under our legislative program for local control of our resources. I'm not up to speed on the uranium one. I don't know if if the city attorney is aware of our legislative program. I don't know if he had a chance to review that and and can say whether that falls under that or if we need support.
I think it would fall under it. We had a couple of points about protecting the integrity of our local environment, and I think it would also be consistent with the existing legislative program.
Okay.
And you got the two new links, right?
Yes, yes. So so if they're both in the program, we could, we could send those. We don't need to have any motion or anything.
Okay, well.
Johnny, I I do have one. I'm going to say, I I got contacted this week by a number of commercial tenants who said, hey, I'm confused and misunderstanding where the city is, what the rules are, why, what I'm hearing from I, if any, I I I would, we did, I believe, at the end of our discussion at the last meeting, we talked about potentially revisiting that issue down the road. I I would again like to revisit it if if anybody else wants.
Which which rule?
Uh, we have not extended the same commercial eviction or moratorium as other cities have at this point.
I would second that, Ryan.
Yeah, because there's already business closing. I don't know if they're closing because they can't pay their rent, but they're closing. So I, yeah.
So the council wants to revisit that next at the next meeting? Is that?
I second your question. Ryan's request, I seconded it, so.
Yeah. Okay, okay, we'll bring that back next meeting.
Very good. Okay, if that's it, we are now adjourned. Thank you all.
That was fun.